America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, one government, individuality, justice, and law.
Do we have any citizen's statements or petitions? Nobody's got their hand up there. Number four, I'm sorry, number three, any correspondence to the board? I don't have anything that we've received, so we'll go to number four. Discussion of the process of hiring a new full-time administrator, town administrator. So we had originally discussed either using...
Mike, you may have to shut the AC off in order for, one, people on the ask anybody listening on there if they can hear. When we had our meeting, we couldn't hear with the ACs on. We couldn't hear, so I hope all of you adjust that.
Okay. Do you want to shut that one off over there? That's the television, the one next to the speaker, to the microphone? We'll start with that. It's probably a little bit quiet.
Everybody on the remote need to hear us?
Yes.
Thanks, John.
So regarding the process of hiring a new full-time town administrator, we have an intern for the next six to nine months, but we want to start the process of searching for a new one, for a full-time replacement. You know, the option we had discussed was actually hiring a firm to do the search. And initially, we talked about the Collins Center. We would not have to make a request for quotes or proposals because they are part of the Commonwealth. But the other option is to actually have our interim town administrator write up, you know, an RFP request for proposals to see. And I was given a list of three or four different search firms, and we could do a combination thereof. So maybe, maybe you can walk us through it, David, if you want.
What I did is I outlined to the board four potential scenarios. One is, the first is being that the board take on the task itself, advertise a position, go through the applications, select finalists, interview, and then select a final person. The upside of that is probably the most expedient, and it has no cost to the town. However, I just want to let the board know that in the process of doing that, that's an open meeting all the way through. You can't have the interviews in executive session. Second option would be for the board to declare that they're going to appoint a screening committee. Screening committee generally is comprised of members from the community as well as certain patent heads. All the applications would be forwarded to the screening committee. The screening committee would go through the applications, select a number of those applicants to be interviewed, and after that, make a certain recommendation to the Board of Selectment regarding a finalist. Now, the screening committee can have their interview in executive session. And the reason for that is that a lot of times when administrators apply for positions, they generally during the first round, they don't want to tell their current employer that they're looking for other work. And as a result of that, they get a feel from the town, they get a feel from the community and the screening committee, and the board. The board, at the next step, would have an open meeting, interview or two, depending upon how you wanted to structure it. And that would be similar to the Selectment, no cost. It might take a couple weeks to put together a screening committee. One thing to note is that the Board of Selectment cannot serve as the screening committee, because I've seen that happen in other communities, and it just can't be done here. You would appoint the screening committee, but you can't be the screening committee. The next option would be to have the board put together, have a direct meeting, put together an RFP. As Mike had said, there are several very good firms out there. One being Community Paradigm, Collins Center, Municipal Resources. There's a couple other independent, Warren Rutherford has a consulting company called Executive Recruiting, a former town manager in Barnstable. And solicit proposals to conduct the initial, well, it could be a variant. It could be a screening committee with the town, with the consultant, or it could be the consultant doing all the background work and then making a presentation to the Board of Selectment. So that's sort of a combination of three and four. I have actually, I joined, there's a group called the Mass Municipal Human Resources Group. They have a listserv that you can throw up their questions. It's a really good resource for human resource managers. I joined yesterday. I already have like four or five different RFPs that we could use, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And I also asked about costs, and some of the companies, some of the towns actually gave me some information about what they thought of the companies that had done the search. And it appears that the cost is going to be anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000. The nice thing about having a search firm do it is, number one, they're usually former managers. Number two, they have a network of all the managers in the state they've worked with. And they would essentially recruit people they thought were qualified for the job. And that's a huge advantage. If you do it on your own, you may get people, you may not get people. It depends upon where you're going to price the salary and compensation and the benefits at. So there are basically, you know, a number of options the board can choose to, in different roles, to go down. I'm going to leave that decision to the board, and I will do whatever needs to be implemented.
I have a question. Is there a downside besides time to ask you to come up with an RFP and make a request and see what we get for organizations and what their cost is, and then we can decide if we're going to go with one of them or some other?
Sure. It is time-consuming for the organizations. They obviously, you know, want to, you know, prepare. Because of proposals, a lot of them are templates. They throw them together, they substitute the name, and they do an active recruiting search, you know, knowing, like Municipal Resource, Community Paradigm, they put together a whole profile of the town, they talk to the board about what the board is seeking in an administrator, they start looking at people who they know who might be qualified. One of the things that they, it's not a big thing, but it does happen. It takes all the politics out of it. There's no influence. They're totally unbiased. They are going to give you candidates they think are qualified and will best serve the town.
Do the RFP templates that you've looked at have anything that outline? I guess what I'd want to do, for me, there's two things, well, what I would like to do is go with a firm, a hybrid, because I wouldn't mind having the town involved in the screening, but I would like a professional recruiting firm to drive it. But I'd be kind of curious, parameters around timing. So do you see the RFPs where we can look for, I mean, to me, it's cost and speed are the two primary drivers in my mind, in terms of the vendor I'd want to choose?
I would say it probably going to take about three to four weeks to put the RFP out, get proposals back.
And would their proposals outline their timeframe? I guess is what I'm asking, for completion of the search from their side?
Oh, yeah. You can make that a requirement of the RFP. And like I said, you may see the prices all over the board. I've got several that offered that information, and all of the ones we mentioned earlier, like Gruen White, that's another one, they're all qualified to do this kind of thing. And several of them, actually, that's their focus. So, you know, they come in, they get to work, and they do it as quickly as possible.
David, for the hybrid option where you would have an outside firm as a consultant and then the selection committee, do you expect any cost savings associated with that if we take some of the work on to the selection committee?
What do you mean, the screening committee?
Yeah.
I think that the consultant will guide them. The consultant will be giving them the names, and he'll sit down, or she'll sit down with the screening committee and identify specifically what it is that we're looking at. They'll put together, she'll put together, specific questions that we should be asking, you know, these are not random. A lot of times, a screening, a screening committee, but a consultant will ask for writing sample. I know Mass Municipal Resources, they have a number of questions that they ask you to complete prior to making a final selection on whether you're going to be interviewed or not. I think the purpose of that is they try to weed out people who are just applying, just to, you know, brush up on their interviewing skills.
Yeah, makes sense.
How, how big are the screening committees? So if we do some, one of the options that includes...
That's fully up to the board. I would say...
How would you recommend?
Seven would probably be the number.
Have you, have you witnessed firsthand towns doing something like this option for this sort of hybrid screening committee and...
Well, I had one proposal came in, and it was from a former lawyer, and they did that. There's no reason I mention that, because I've never heard of it.
Did you get any feedback from them about the process?
This was all done yesterday, really.
Oh, okay.
I actually didn't even go through the RFPs that were sent to me, because I didn't have time to do that. But I have four or five templates that I can use to craft out, one for the town, and it can be done fairly quickly.
Yeah, I was kind of curious if...
I don't want to make the committee too unreliable.
Right, right.
You know, once you get up above a certain number, you know, it does, it does slow the process down.
Right.
I'd be curious if the committee and the consultant ever have differing views of the top three candidates.
Yeah.
So at this point, my...
They're going to bring in people that aren't probably known in Mendon, where you might get a local candidate who is qualified that may apply, and that's awesome. But most of the people you're going to see, they're going to be from other communities, where obviously you're going to look at somebody who has work experience in the field, has a, you know, bachelor, or either an MBA, MPA kind of thing. He has some experience, five to seven years. You don't want this to be, and I've seen this happen before, you don't want this to be a, an on-the-draw learning experience, where, you know, if you pay too low, you might not get a candidate, you're going to get a, if you get a damaged candidate, who's just trying to get back in the field, go to the state for a year, rebuild their...
I feel like that's the main reason to use a professional
Yeah.
...search system, to whittle that out, so that the town's committee can, you know, get, get all that out of the way, so that they can just consider who they feel is best for the community, and then, you know, we can have at it after that. I feel like that's the most, the best way to satisfy as many levels of...
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, Mendon is going through a lot of transitions, so I feel like, yeah, we need experience in that position.
Stability.
And soon would be good, but I think, yeah, getting the right person is, is key.
And the other thing, too, is that the consultant would be able to give you a reasonable price of the type of experience that you're looking for. Once again, if you get somebody and your price is wrong, you're going to get somebody, it's going to, it's going to be never ending revolving...
And head hunting.
All you need is one year of experience, and you can move on to another community, unfortunately. So you don't want to be the, the town that's trading people and then moving along.
So unless this is an objection, I'm just going to ask that David just write up and send out an RFP to get proposals for a professional firm to do the search.
Should we also in parallel be trying to build a committee?
I do like that.
If that's happening anyway?
Yeah.
That's where I'm headed.
Right. Well, I mean, I guess I wonder about, yeah, more discussion about that, but...
I just would, what I'd like to do is to, to get some direction about how to create that committee within the community. So I'm thinking we can get the, we have enough time that we can get an RFP written up pretty quick and ideally have it sent out within two weeks. And then, you know, we look at, we look at, you know, once we...
Four weeks, yeah. Four weeks, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean...
They have somebody on board.
Right. So we're about four weeks out to have somebody on board and then discuss with them, you know, how to create the screening committee to work for hybrid.
Beginning of September.
Yeah, well...
I'd be curious if we know any towns who've done that option to, like, who formed the committee and if any, if anyone had any suggestions?
Orleans did it.
Oh, did, okay. All right. There we go.
This is most recent hire, yeah?
Okay. Ah, right, that one.
Yeah. So, I mean, do we agree we want to, I mean, I have no problem moving in parallel paths in terms of execution, so let's do the RFP. Sure, why not? But I would kind of, can we decide on whether we believe we want the hybrid approach, and then we can figure out how to do the steering committee or the selection committee as well?
But it's either having the consultants do all the background work.
Right.
Be true, say, hey, these are the three to five people you should interview, or you can bring, I think it's important to have public input in, particularly in a small community like this where you want, you might want the finest director and the least required team, you know...
But as a board, do we, do we agree that we want the selection committee in tandem with the consultant?
For myself, yes.
I'm leaning that way.
Yes.
I could be on board with that.
Yeah, we can figure out how to execute on that, but let's move forward on the RFP.
And that way, you have, and then maybe a couple presidents that might be a person serving, so they'd be seven. And then you, then you have some, you will still get feedback from the screening committee, they're not going to, you know, the driver is going to be the consultant.
Okay.
Well, Sweet Fifty Milford Street, question that I have is, would that parallel committee be in the interview process with the consultant, or would that come after the consultant has made his choices? And then the parallel committee would say, okay, well, these are the candidates that we need to screen and decide if they're right for this town?
It could be either way, really. You could have a consultant screen them down, take all the hogs that's out of it.
Yeah. My, my, my thought would be that, you know, the professional firm, you know, does the vetting to a, you know, to a certain size, and then if you have, if you do go with some kind of a committee, and then they narrow it down further to say three, and ultimately those three would be interviewed by this board that would make the decision.
And just say, they're not in parallel, they're actually together, they're working together.
Well, that's...
So I would even say the RFP might need to state that this process would be in tandem with a selection committee made up of local residents.
So they would know when they're recording it?
Yeah. So when they're coming in, they know they're working with a committee, and if somebody's done that before, they can actually explain to us how that might work when we talk.
Yeah, well, I, I think if you put the RFP, you know, I would, I'd be looking to get proposals of how they want to do it.
Right.
Because some of them, some of them may want to do it.
Our intent is to do it that way, so talk us on your RFP.
Right. I guess that's my point, is, you know, because there's, because I've been, I've been told there's pros and cons to both ways of doing it, and the most important thing is to keep the politics out of it, you know? So nobody is, you know, trying to steer everyone in a certain direction because they know somebody...
It won't be fair to the new administrator either, if they have to deal with the politics of why they were hired.
So I sort of did it the other way with just a consultant, so I'm excited to try it with steering committee too, or selection committee. Do it both ways, personal bias.
So let's, at this point, we'll have you write the RFP and let's...
Have it ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, have it ready for the next meeting, and then we can approve it.
Send it out.
All right.
Do we need a motion on that, or is that...
I don't think we need a motion on that, it's just a direction to...
Do we need a motion to send it out?
Yes. We'll do that in two, that, that's...
No, I'm just wondering, I didn't know if you had a draft, we could actually look at it individually.
Yeah, well, my attempt would be to get...
I just didn't know if you needed a vote to actually execute.
Yeah, because I was, well, what I had, when we started originally, I was just going to have him just write it, send it, and then bring it at the next step.
I've done that, too.
But I thought it was a better idea to discuss it like this first, so we were all on the same page, before we even sent it out. So he'll have it written in two weeks, and then we can all look at it ahead of time, and then we'll...
If this works, then so...
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to be the first meeting in August, right?
Yes, right. Right. Number five, discussion on Collins Center Highway Draft Report. I think Dave Colton was going to join us remotely. There he is.
Here I am.
How are you, sir?
How are you?
Great.
I'm well. How are you? Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Great. I'm here with my colleague, Jim Tarr. We were the team that worked on the, um, here we go, worked on the, on the report. If you can go back to the begin, there we go. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation, if I can get right into it. You want to go to the next, if that's okay?
Sure.
We go to the next slide. So, as you know, we were engaged to review the organizational structure of the Highway Department, and this was done as part of the Community Compact Program, as part of their, the state's effort to implement best practices in municipality. We interviewed over 15 people, including employees, members of various boards and committees, and elected officials. We also gathered comparative information from 11 municipalities, and I'll get into how we selected those a little later on. And we also did a document review and looked at practices in other towns. We submitted a draft in, in June, a draft report in June, and this is the presentation of that report. The next slide. So, you know, we, first we looked at the Highway Department, and, you know, we found a standalone Highway Department that does the kind of typical things that a Highway Department does, roadway maintenance and snow plowing and tree maintenance and so And we looked at the staffing. We looked at seven employees, seven full-time employees and one part-time employee. At the time we started, the Highway Surveyor was the department head, and he was elected, and I, that has been changed to an appointed position now. You know, four heavy motor equipment operators, one of which, and, one of which acts as the foreman, will get a, an additional stipend in his salary for that. One of the, the next employee is a mechanic who's also a heavy motor equipment operator, so the mechanic primarily takes care of the equipment, but also can work in the field. And is an administrative assistant and a part-time attendant for the recycling facility, who I believe only works on Saturdays. The heavy motor equipment operators are required to hold a commercial driver's license and a class, Massachusetts Class 2B hoisting license, and as I said, one of the four receives a stipend to serve as the foreman. Next, so that's your current department. Next slide, please. Here are some of our key findings. First finding, that compensation levels for Highway employees are significantly lower than surrounding towns. And I will elaborate on that later, we have a chart to show you exactly what we found. The Highway Surveyor has historically been a working supervisor, spending most of his workday in the field, and doing functions similar to the, all the other employees of the department. No one in the Highway Department has certification or training in state procurement law. This is important because, you know, Highway Departments buy a lot of things, right? They need to, they need to procure, you know, a lot of different materials and at times equipment, and having somebody in a Highway Department who has the training in Massachusetts procurement law, you know, is, is, becomes important for a Highway Department in particular. Your Highway Department does not have a work order, so they have a formal work order system. Work is given out on a daily basis by the Highway Surveyor or the foreman, and it is based on what the Highway Surveyor sees as the most significant need and what he has for resources that day to do work. So it's not a well-organized system, it's a kind of a day-to-day, what are we going to do today? We decide in the morning and we give out our orders. The Highway Department operates out of a pretty dated facility, and has a satellite storage facility. The facility is, you know, is mostly fine. It's a little crowded, it's, it's dated, it has no, really no employee facilities. And, you know, although it's functional, it's not, certainly not ideal. Capital planning is another area that we found was a little bit deficient. We heard over and over, oh, we asked for this and we didn't get it, and we asked for it again and we didn't get it, and we didn't, we didn't hear from the people that, that we interviewed that there was really any planning behind taking care of the capital needs of the department. Next slide. So we also looked at the other departments in the town that are public works related, that have similar missions to Highway. Parks maintenance is one area that we looked at. You have a Parks and Recreation Department, it's almost named by a Parks Commission, and generally, the recreation side of the house is pretty well-managed. You have a seasonal staff that runs the programs in the summertime, you don't have any winter programs. So it's a seasonal thing, it seems to be working well. That wasn't really part of our mission to look at, programs run by the Recreation Department. So we focused on the maintenance side. Town, town parks and other public spaces, like cemeteries and other green areas, are maintained by the Director and the Seasonal Maintenance Crew. This is understaffed. We found that the Director is regularly out there mowing and otherwise maintaining parks and playing fields, et cetera. And because the seasonal staff doesn't begin work until the middle of May and is gone by the end of August, the Director is many times the only person mowing, mowing the fields and taking care of the field with some minimal help exclusively in the, in the spring, you know, when things, when, when, you know, things start to get really busy in April and May, and are still busy in September. We found that no, there are no job descriptions for the seasonal staff, there's a, there's a one paragraph to summary, but you'd be, job descriptions are lacking there. And equipment storage is really insufficient. The Park Maintenance utilizes an abandoned municipal building that wasn't built for storage for equipment, and they kind of stuff the mowers into the, into a small building at the park area, however they can fit them. So storage is a, is a significant issue for the park maintenance. Next, next slide. We, then we looked at water and wastewater. Water, your water system is managed by a three-member board of commissioners and operates through a contract with Whitewater, Water and Wastewater Solutions. That contract is limited to testing and reporting, they don't provide any, any construction services or maintenance services. Water management... Uh, water main breaks and leaks are, are taken care of by contractors on a, sort of an ad hoc basis. Um, there's also a five-hour-per-week administrative clerk who also happens to be the park director. Um, and he, uh, you know, he's, his job is really to handle the billing, um, but he has to at times go out in the field and deal with issues with water meters and making repairs and, and so forth. Um, that being said, the water system is small. There's a hundred and seventy-nine service connections, the water supplied by Town of Hope deal. Um, there are also twenty-four wells that are considered public water supplies, uh, serving county buildings. Those are regulated by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Next slide. The, uh, water is distributed to these hundred and seventy-nine connections through about twenty-five thousand linear feet of water main, including about thirteen thousand feet of water main that is, uh, made of asbestos cement, asbestos-lined cement water main. This is a type of water main that was discontinued in the nineteen-sixties, as you might imagine, due to, uh, potential for asbestos entering the, uh, drinking water. That being said, the water is tested regularly and has not become a health issue, but it's not, um, you know, it's not unfair to say that there's the potential there and that that potential will eventually become a reality if those mains aren't replaced. Um, a wa- you, you did a water expansion study earlier this year, recommended through the Conference of Teslo program to develop new water supplies, um, and, uh, to begin development of the system expansion. There is no public wastewater collection or treatment system. So, uh, you know, we found that Mendon's water supply system, although right now is, because it's so small and because it's, things are working pretty okay, um, consolidating into the Department of Public Works is not necessary. But if you decide to expand it, it's something that you should seriously consider. Next, next slide. So, with that ba- that background, uh, basis and information, uh, we then, uh, did some comparative analysis to other towns. We selected eleven municipalities to compare Mendon with, and we did this in consultation with your former town administrator. Uh, and we used population, uh, equalized valuation per capita, total road miles, and some municipalities historically cited as Mendon's peers. We also included in that group, uh, your immediate neighbors, uh, as, as comparative. Next slide. So this shows the comparable communities and kind of where you sit under all those categories. You can see you're basically in the middle of that group in terms of population, tax bill and so forth, um, um, and budget. Um, so, nothing in the comparative analysis in terms of, in terms of those, by those parameters is out of the ordinary. Um, no red flags here. Your, your budget seems to be, uh, more or less adequate, um, as, as a percentage of your municipal budget. Um, and, uh, you're, uh, providing a levels of service comparable to these other communities in most cases, for your Highway Department. Next slide. So, there were some themes from the comparative analysis. Uh, so, seven of the eleven municipalities have, uh, consolidated their public works operations. Um, they, they have a public works department that includes a variety of, uh, of different functions. Um, and you, you can see in the next bullet point, you know, some of them have consolidated building maintenance into their public works. Some of them have solid waste and recyclables. Most of them have the upkeeps of public grounds ranging from cemeteries to parks to buildings, uh, building grounds. Uh, six of the seven have forestry, uh, and six of the seven changed the title of their department head to director. Um, all seven have consolidated water and sewer operations. So, um, this is true of the, the communities we compared you with. It's also on a statewide basis, we can say with, you know, with a great deal of certainty that, uh, consolidated public works departments are the norm and it is, is the, is, is sort of the best practice, um, that's in, in the state. Um, your total public works budget as a percentage of your municipal budget, um, is, uh, six point seven percent for your Highway Department. Uh, for the, uh, peer group, it's five point six nine percent. So, this indicates to us that a transition to a, uh, a consolidated public wor- works department will not necessarily increase costs because most of these, uh, departments that we compared you with have consolidated departments and their, uh, percentage of their, of their operating budget is actually lower than you, or, uh, you should be able to do this without increasing cost uh, over the long term. Go ahead.
I, I have a, a question.
Sure.
You talk about the, the peer groups have, uh, it's five point six nine percent. Our Mendon's Highway Budget, six point seven percent. Is that just the Highway Department? Is that Highway and Parks together? And how does that compare to this, uh, five point six nine percent for the peer group? Is that just their Highway function, or is that their combined function that's the lower percentage?
Um, I believe the, and, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the five point six nine is the public, is the public works budget um, for those communities. So the, it's the average. So, seven are, have consolidated departments and then four do not, so it's the average of those. Jim, did I state that right?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say that these are numbers that are aggregated by, um, the Municipal Data Bank, so this is, um, Division of Local Services, uh, figures. And so I believe their methodology is they sort of aggregate public works-type functions. Um, and this is data that can be looked up on, uh, their website.
Well, I just wanna make sure we're talking about, we're talking about apples and apples because this, if six point seven is just Highway, I mean, how much does, how much does Parks, if you're suggesting that they be combined? You know, how does that, what's the real number, you know?
No, I'm sorry. The, the slide, the slide, uh, is misleading. The, the Municipal Data Bank numbers consolidate public works-type functions. Um, so that would be all of anything that they consider to be a public works-type function. So, uh, it is apples to apples. It's the same, same, uh, kind of functions that are included in your comparative group as, as, yeah, than your number. Is that clear?
Um, I, I think so. So what you're telling me is that when you say the aggregate's five point six nine percent, that's combining all the public works functions, for instance, Parks and Highway and Water. And the six point seven you're saying is ours is only, only Highway?
No, I'm not saying that. I said the slide is, slide, the slide mistakes that. We use the Municipal Data Bank figures from the Department of, uh, Local Services, and they aggregate the public works costs. Okay, so they would be li-
So the six point seven is combined as well?
That's right. That, that slide should say your public works budget, not your Highway budget.
David, I have a question on the same, on, on actually the last point you made on that same bullet. Indicating a transition to, uh, public works will not necessarily increase costs, but many of your recommendations are citing, uh, under, uh, Highway being, their salaries being lower, understaffed, uh, parks, so do, are there recommendations where you, you're suggesting we're gonna gain efficiencies? Because if we, financially, if we address some of those other recommendations, our six point seven's gonna grow. And our, you know, our budget's not necessarily, necessarily gonna grow. So if we're already above the median or the average there for our peer group, we're only gonna grow that. So what makes, what makes you say that we're not gonna necessarily increase costs when some of the recommendations will increase costs?
Right. I, that, what we're saying is the transition to a public works department in and of itself would not, uh, increase the cost. There are some things that we're recommending that will increase the cost, and there are things that we're recommending that will improve efficiency and have a downward pressure on the cost.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, okay. So our recommendations are two groups. We have ones that are specifically from the Highway Department. If you, that you, that we believe you should implement, whether or not you consolidate. And then we have some public works consolidation recommendations, um, that you may or may not implement. Um, and none of them, i- i- only one of them are recommending be implemented, uh, you know, more or less immediately. Uh, we also included in the report an implementation framework table, which assigns priority and discusses, you know, discusses cost. Next slide. So the first recommendation is to change that title. Highway Surveyor is an old-time title. It's not used very much anymore. Um, it, that if you advertise this job as Highway Surveyor, you are gonna limit your pool of candidates. Um, so we recommend that you change the title to Public Works Director. Um, it to be in, in step with, uh, you know, the current, uh, uh, vocabulary and what, uh, candidates out there in the market are, are gonna be looking for. Um, that should go along with that should be a written job description with competitive compensation, and I'm gonna talk about compensation soon. Um, we think you should refocus the leadership. Get the, uh, department head out of the field into the office, focusing on management and administration of the department. Um, you know, occasionally being out in the field is fine, but day-to-day, uh, in the field, it's really then you're neglecting the management of the department and you're missing opportunities for greater efficiency. Um, we also recommend that you restructure job titles and pay grades for the department. Um, the reason for that is, um, you really don't have any opportunity for advancement within the department. An employee, you're expecting to hire a heavy MEO and have them stay with the department for the long term with very limited opportunity for advancement or increases in salary. Uh, and as I'll show, I think in the next slide, with how bad that situation is. Um, training, um, is, is another area where you, where there could be improvement. Um, and, you know, there's a number of opportunities out there for training programs at low cost or no cost. Um, they can be simple, simple, uh, lunch-and-learn kind of, uh, training, uh, desktop training. Um, but when a new employee is hired, currently, there's no real training. It's just, they go out in the field and they're shown what to do. Um, you really should regulari- regulari- regula- I'm, uh, tripping over that word, so I won't use it. Uh, you should get, uh, you should have it were, uh, regular orientation and a regular training program. Um, and you should require the, uh, purchasing, somebody in the department to be a, uh, a certified, uh, procurement officer. These are our high pri- higher, highest priorities recom- recommendations. Uh, next slide. So here, we, we did a, a little salary survey of your surrounding communities. Um, and you can see you're a Highway Surveyor, um, uh, Public Works Directors. You're paying, uh, first of all, you don't have a scale. You, you only have one rate. Um, and the maximum pay in other towns is four dollars and twenty-one cents on average higher than what you're paying. Um, that can be a significant difference when you're recruiting. Um, and that, and just down the list, you can see, uh, for all your positions, the minimum pay and the maximum pay is significantly lower than your market for the, for the towns in your area with whom you are competing for employ- employees. We are in a very tight labor market, as I'm sure you all understand. Unemployment rate is low. Um, there, there's not a surplus of people out there looking for these jobs, and you wanna be able to recruit, uh, people who are going to stay with you. And I wanted to highlight, if you look at the, uh, the spread, if you look at the Mendon minimum hourly rate and the Mendon maximum hourly rate, you go from minimum to maximum less than a dollar an hour. So, if somebody coming in, starting as a heavy equipment operator, is looking at that and they're making twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents an hour, and the best they're gonna be able to do is twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents. That's a deterrent in hiring, a deterrent in retention. Uh, if you look at the other towns, there's, you know, there's a five, six-dollar spread between the minimum and the maximum salary. So the employee can look at that and, uh, have, uh, be, be hopeful that, uh, he or she will be able to earn more money. Um, also, uh, you don't have a lot of titles. Everybody comes in as a heavy ma- heavy equipment, uh, operator. Um, and, um, there's no place to go. So, you know, one of our recommendations is that you create some tiers, maybe. Right now, you don't have any regular labor equipment operators. They're all heavy. Maybe you have people come in at the lower rate, um, and train them up so they can see that they have a path for some advancement. The other situation is the, the foreman. Your, 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 your pay differential between your foreman and your, um, uh, heavy, heavy motor equipment operator is only a dollar an hour. Um, you can see that that is the job with the significant, the most significant variance from your peer group at twelve dollars and forty cents on the maximum pay. So, a foreman in all of the towns around you, on average, is making twelve dollars and forty cents more than your foreman. Um, that's a, uh, that's a significant, uh, deterrent to retention, uh, and recruitment. Any questions on that slide?
I don't think so.
Next slide. So we have some other recommendations for the Highway Department in terms of adopting a work order system. Uh, you know, a, a, a good work order system will prioritize the work, will, uh, uh, you'll gain efficiencies in be, in, in grouping like things together, so you, you're, um, you're, you're not, uh, so that you can, um, uh, you can spend more in bulk and do, uh, uh, ma- you know, uh, like things together and not be doing one thing one day and another thing the next day. Also, will allow your department to communicate better with the public about what they're doing. Um, as I mentioned earlier, you know, prioritizing capital planning, having a capital improvement plan. uh, is something that you should be working towards. And you should be evaluating the, uh, facility needs. Particularly, uh, in the case of the, uh, in the, uh, in the case of highway department, but particularly if you combine the highway and the park. The parks just don't have the facilities. Next slide. So our consolidation recommendations. We recommend that the parks maintenance be peeled away from parking recreation department and incorporated into a public works department with your highway. There is a lot of efficiency to be gained here. Your, um, your public works employees can be re- reassigned in the spring to help with the, uh, with the park maintenance, um, and pick up the slack, uh, uh, until the seasonal cruise starts. This, uh, this will will help you, you know, uh, uh, maintain those parks and cemeteries, uh, in better condition. Get them, uh, ready without having your director, uh, running around on a lawnmower and, uh, freeing him up to, uh, manage the park and recreation program. The, um, other thing we looked at are facilities, public facilities. Right now, you don't have a public facilities department, is basically run out of the town administrator's office. It's a good idea to put a department head between the, uh, maintenance staff, the custodians, the maintenance staff and the maintenance contractors and the town administrator. You know, one of the best practices is to limit the number of contacts, con- contacts that the, uh, our reporting contacts that the, uh, town administrator has, uh, to make that job more manageable. Solid waste and recycling programs. The practice today is not, is to take that away from, uh, public health. No longer is it, is collection of solid waste and recycling a public health issue. It it's been that kind of, uh, uh, problem of public health related issues regarding solid waste and recycling has really been, uh, minimized or eliminated. And it's become an operation. Your health department regulates a lot of things in town, but they don't run a lot of things in town. Public Works Department would have people who are used to, um, operations, uh, manpower, equipment, uh, scheduling, that kind of thing. Uh, and more, more and more towns are moving away from the model that puts this in the, in the, in the hands of the public health department and puts it in the department of pu- in a department of public works. The health department would still have regulatory control, would have, you know, would be able to inspect, would be able to have regulations, uh, controlling it. But operationally, um, the trend is to move it to public works. And as I said earlier, um, if you do decide to expand your water system, you do decide, or you do decide to develop a public wastewater system, um, it would be, uh, but it would be the best practice to have that included in the department of public works. This doesn't mean that you need to do away with your elected, uh, board of water commissioners. They could still function as the policy board, as the regulation setting board. But eh, once again, those kind of operational issues, the procurement of contracts, the, uh, the, the, the organization of, uh, of how the workflow gets, happens, hopefully processed through a good work order system will improve your ability to manage the water system, which will become, uh, more difficult and more complex as you expand it, obviously. Particularly if you now, um, if you get to the point where you're developing your own sources of public water supply and you're talking about any kind of level of treatment for that water supply. You're going to need, um, qualified people to do that. And, uh, it just makes a lot of sense to incorporate that into public works department with people who understand how to operate, uh, equipment and, um, do this kind of work. Next slide. So implementation of of these, uh, uh, of course, if you're establishing a new department of public works, there are a number of different ways to do it. Uh, of course, you should consult with your town council about that, uh, whether you do it by bylaw, whether you do it by, uh, a, uh, a home war petition. Is that something that you would discuss with your council? Most of these changes, I think, you know, in our, uh, in our experience, there are core management rights. So, uh, you're, uh, you shouldn't have any issues with your collective bargaining agreement. But, um, that's another area to make sure of, that there's no outlying provisions in your collective bargaining agreement that are not the norm. Um, but, uh, next slide, we have the implementation. We have, this was, this is be what your structure would look like, uh, if you implemented everything. A director with all of these divisions reporting to the director. Next slide. So we put this implementation framework together. Each recommendation has a, a ti- a timeframe. Some are immediately, uh, a few are immediately, uh, most are not. Um, we have put a priority on them. I think we already mentioned the high priority highway department recommendations in the, in the, uh, in the preceding slides. We have a, uh, little, uh, uh, description of what we see as the impact on operating costs. Of course, we, you know, until you have an actual plan in place and you know exactly what you're going to do, uh, you really can't cost everything out. But, um, looking at, looking at the long, eh, at short and long term, um, costs and savings in this, these descriptions. Clearly, if you implement our recommendations, your labor costs are going to increase. You will need, you know, to compensate for that, the taking the highway surveyor out of the field. You're going to have to replace him in the field. No question about it. Um, but you will, uh, gain some efficiencies by having the, uh, director in the office. Management, somebody with good management skills, a strong manager in the office will save you money. The, uh, uh, next slide, please. So, uh, capital planning, of course, really has no cost. Uh, it's just a process that you do eh, with your in-house staff. You can contract it out, um, but you don't need to. Um, and I say that as somebody who does capital improvement plans for, for towns as part of our work at the Collins Center. Um, but many towns do it on their own. The work order system, you're going to have an initial outlay. But the, the savings that you will see in better organizing your workflow will more than offset the cost of the system. Your, our highest priority i- i- item is the consolidation of the parks maintenance. The current operating methodology is just really unsustainable. It, eh, you're, the, first of all, seasonal maintenance people are just that, they're seasonal. And they're just not available for the, for the full, for the full season that you need them for. Your, your season is lo- yes, if you will, your season is longer than the ability to, uh, attract seasonal employees. Cause they're mostly, um, students, either in high school or college. They're not available until towards the end of May at the earliest. So, um, your, eh, eh, all of the work that gets done in April and most of May, and as I said in September, is just being done by your parks director. And he's doing a good job, um, but, uh, it's, it's not really the way you want to operate. Public facilities, you know, I think this is something we recommend that you begin a planning process on. There's no, uh, urgency to do this, but in the long run, um, you will, uh, you will see cost savings through better management of the facilities in terms of preventative maintenance, um, and, um, you know, not, you know, and it's not waiting until things fall apart. Being more proactive in your management of your facilities does save money. Solid waste and recycling programs, there's no real cost savings there. Uh, it's just, it's a best practice, it's something we recommend. Eh, again, nothing that you have to do right away. Maybe at the expiration of the next, of the current contract, it would be some, be the right time to make a change. The water system, you know, that's a low priority item at this point. If you do get serious about expanding the system, that, you know, that's going to, that re- that's going to require further study. Final slide. Next slide. So I want to thank everybody. Thank the select board, the staff, the volunteers and the residents who helped, uh, helped us with the study. And, uh, be happy to, uh, my, it's my email address is up there. Anybody has any questions after this meeting, please don't hesitate to send me an email. But I'm happy to respond to any questions right now.
I had a, uh, question about the, uh, the organizational structure, if you have a second. So, um, right now, the, the proposal is a director with an administrative assistant serving under. And then independent departments are building grounds, highway, parks, et cetera, reporting up to that director. So would each of those sub-departments have a, a department head or proposed department head? Or is it, um, a cor- sort of, uh, flatter organizational structure?
Yeah, not necessary, not necessarily a department head. Uh, you might have a foreman, um, who would be in charge of your highway. A foreman who would be in charge of your buildings and grounds eh, and parks and cemeteries. These are more functional areas. Of course, solid waste and recycling is all done by contract. That's something that can be managed by the director with his help of the administrative assistant, uh, in terms of, uh, the day to day operation of that. Water, of course, is the wild card here, not knowing what your plans are with the water system. Um, if it, if you did in fact develop a much larger water system, like I said, with your own sources of water supply, your treatment plants and a larger distribution system, yes, you would need a, uh, you would need any number of people to operate that in terms of, uh, uh, treatment plant operators and, uh, certified, uh, distribution system people. But again, it wouldn't necessarily be a department head level person, it would be more operational staff. I think you're small enough that you can do this without a lot of, uh, middle management overhead.
So, so David, one of the obvious things here, you know, we have elected park commissioners, we have elected, um, you know, water board, much, much as we had an elected highway surveyor. We'd have to look at changing all of those as well, isn't that correct?
Not necessarily. You're, you're, um, there are, I mean, ideally, you know, the Collins Center is an advocate for replacing elected boards and committees with appointed ones. Um, there are a number of reasons for that. But operationally, you wouldn't necessarily have to do that to implement this plan. Your elected water commissioners could still set policy, uh, could still, still set wat- would still set regulations, pat- you know, adopt regulations for the use of water. Uh, the water commissioners would set the water rate, for example. And the director would work, wo- work, um, based on the policy set by the water commissioners, for example, or the park commissioners, for example.
So in other words, the elected officials set the policies, but it's the, the full-time professionals actually run the department and make those decisions with their employees?
Exactly. And I would, you know, I would recommend that, um, you know, elected water commissioners and parks commissioners really not be involved in selecting the, uh, the employees, that that be done, uh, through the town administrator and the select board, uh, in terms of recruiting and hi- you know, hiring people and, uh, setting wage scales and that kind of thing. So I would take them out of the human resources management.
Eh, 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 just another question. You talked about taking the, um, solid waste trash out of the board of health. But where we actually hire a vendor with a contract and we're part of the, you know, wheel-ibrated group of all the towns that, uh, have, you know, a, a deal with Milbury. Is it really necessary to remove that from the board of health where it's a vendor that they negotiate the contract with? Are you suggesting that should also be taken away?
Yes, we are suggesting that the solid waste and recycling, um, be moved from the board of health to under, under the, uh, town administrator, uh, in board of selection. And be overseen by a D P W director. What of the, the health department, it's, it's really because even though it's a contract, the contract still needs to be managed. The, uh, operational issues are better understood by a D P W than they are, you know, by a, by a bo- by a health department in, you know, I'm not talking specifically about you, but in general, right? That you, you have a better, eh, there's a better chance that a D P W director who's trained, who is used to dealing with, uh, scheduling of equipment and work, workflow is going to be better suited to manage a contractor who's doing those kinds of operations. Health departments have a full play, have, have a pretty full plate. They are, you know, you, they've got the, uh, the septic systems to watch out for, all the restaurants to, uh, inspect. And if, uh, and I know I've, I've been told that you have, that the board of health has a, uh, pretty solid individual overseeing this and that that's working well. That, uh, that might not always be the case and the priorities might shift. You, the priority of the, eh, in, in our view, the priority of the health department is to regulate and to protect the public health, not to operate, um, functions like this. And, and that's been the trend throughout the state.
Yeah, I think you had to consolidate the operations to gain any sort of efficiencies.
Right.
You know, so.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm asking the question, I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just getting some clarification.
Yeah, I think you had to consolidate the operations to gain any sort of efficiencies.
Right. I, I don't, I'm, I'm asking the question, I'm not disagreeing with it, I'm just getting some clarification. Does anybody have any other questions?
I do, yes. So, uh, so you mentioned, um, public tree maintenance as part of Highway Department, but we also have a, um, an elected tree warden, and I wondered, sort of, I, I think you mentioned that some towns have forestry under the Department of Public Works. Is tree warden something that you would also see sort of eventually be folded into this DPW?
Yes, uh, and that would be, you know, that would be, uh, right now, um, green areas, you know, trees and shrubs and grass and are managed by different people, right? You've got a tree warden, you've got a park, you've got parks people, you've got highway people, you know, all of the work along the sides of roads that have to do with cutting back, uh, uh, shrubbery and so forth and trimming trees, that falls on the Highway Department. Our model is if it, every, that, um, the Highway Department now be in charge of anything that's outside that has greenery, a park, a cemetery, uh, a, a public monument, a, uh, the, the front lawn of Town Hall, all of those kinds of things, uh, be, and, and trees, of course, be under the Department of Public Works. Um, many towns have elected tree wardens, um, but elected tree wardens don't, um, typically have the budget to actually do the work, right? They're, they have to look to somebody to do that work. And, um, you know, one of the things that kind of under, underpins this whole analysis is the fact that public work has, is, has become a very complex kind of, uh, operation, um, and is getting more complex with the, with the regulations that are in place, the bidding regulations, the environmental regulations, the public notice regulations, you know, you want some staff to have to deal with this, you, you, um, to get, to handle these things in a more efficient way. So, um, the tree warden, of course, could still have a role, um, within the Department of Public Works, but, um, the decision-making around, okay, we, we need to deal with this tree and that tree, or when do we schedule that, how do we, how do we put that into a, how do we contract, do we contract that, do the other things we can do ourselves, those kinds of decisions, um, would be better made with a, with the input of a director who's, um, you know, well-versed in these areas. That was a long-winded answer, was that okay, is that clear enough?
Thank you. I guess, I, I have another question, uh, which was, so you have a recommendation to immediately change the, um, the title for, you know, Highway Surveyor, but I guess to something like, um, a Director of Public Works, but we also need to, if we're going to have a Department of Public Works, I mean, does there need to be, does the department need to change before we can have that title, or can they be somewhat independent?
They can be somewhat independent, you know, you're, you're basically, what you're saying is, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a Director of Public Works, and that Director of Public Works is going to have, uh, input, and it can be of various, in various degrees into all things public works related in the town. So if, uh, um, water commissioners want to do something, well, you as the Board of, you, you as the select board will be, you know, directing, that, that the Public Works Director be involved. Um, now, eventually, you, 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 you can expand that and expand the authority of the Director and actually develop a Public Works Department that might incorporate water or might incorporate other things, but you don't need to have that department in place to have the title and to have, and to, um, so that, and, and the compensation level so that you can attract a person with the, uh, you know, the experience and the, and the education to, to be able to weigh in on these issues and help, you know, help the water commissioners, help the park commissioners do a better job managing the, the things under their control.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. This is a lot to chew on.
Please, uh, let us know, uh, give us, please, uh, you know, feel free to give us any comments, um, and, you know, we can, uh, this is in draft form, if you have, uh, anything you want us, you want us to, uh, look at further or elaborate further on in the final document, please let us know.
All right. We'll be in touch, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, take care.
All right. Uh, let's, let's move around here a little bit, let's go to number eight, which is, uh, an appointment for the Police Department. Chief, you can come on up and...
That was a great presentation.
Right. Glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah, part of the induction ceremony. Go through an hour PowerPoint.
Kind of like sitting at, sitting at court.
A few of them, I've told them that we've done a few studies and that's, that's part of my job. Um, so we're asking to appoint Justin tonight, Justin is, um, a local, he's from Douglas originally, um, in the military and went recently through a police academy that was sponsored through the military. So it's a 12-week program, correct? Sixteen-week program, uh, shortened a little bit because of his military experience, um, just graduated a couple of weeks ago, he's already come in to start learning our policies, procedures, um, all he has left is his physical from, after the graduation, and his psychological. Um, so we're just asking to appoint him with the conditional passing of both those things, and, uh, then he'll start hopefully next week.
So I, I guess I'd be looking for a motion that, pending successful completion of a physical and psychological exam, that we appoint, uh, Mr. Justin Kaliza?
Celeza.
Celeza, uh, as a police officer at the step-one pay rate of $1,092.30 per week.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you very much for joining our community.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. As an update, Justin's replacing Officer Trapalas, who went to the Cape, so he went to join a department down there, uh, next to, actually, where Kim went, so he's, uh, on his boat right now, being a police officer down there. We have one more position we'll be filling in September, and that's, um, Officer Thompson, who left to go work in the solar field, selling solar stuff, so he left the police work completely. So, yeah, it's a common theme these days. It's like a 10-year cycle. Not because of the town. No, no, it's police work in general, it's like, it's weird, but, but that's where we are with the status of the Police Department, and, uh, he's already doing great with us, and I'm sure he'll have a great career here, and it's nice, we have a, we have a new department, and it's a refreshing department, a lot of young blood, working hard, actually do good things, so. I don't know if I want to get a picture of you guys quick, we'll put it on Facebook.
Sure.
Yeah, sure, guys.
Or you want to be the photographer?
I sure will.
Nixon, a judge, you want to have a look at you?
He's married, that's good. I have to stay wide because, because we have to.
Wait a minute, that's all wrong, it's gotta be three and three, it's four and two.
Elaine, is this still?
They should comment on Facebook, Bob.
Okay, I hope, let me know if this looks okay.
Yeah, I'm doing it in a way.
Yeah, well, with you and then shaking hands or something.
Oh, we get that side.
Okay.
Jake, welcome. You don't need to bring anything else, right?
Nope, I'm good. All right, thanks, chief.
Good evening, chief.
All right, if you guys want to come on up, so for number six, I know this is taking a while, but back at the, uh, at the annual town meeting, the, uh, you know, the townspeople had authorized us to, to transfer a quarter acre of land that, uh, is landlocked in the middle of, um, of 50 Milford Street, had been taken for taxes decades ago. Um, it's landlocked, it's really, the town hasn't been collecting any tax on it, and it's really worthless, so what we were gonna do is just, uh, transfer it to the owners of all the land around it. So I don't know if somebody wants to, motion is in number six here.
I move that the select board transfer approximately .25 acres of town-owned land located at 50 Milford Street, as shown as lots one and two of block C on a plan entitled Edgewood by Hatfield Bowlil, the corp dated May 1927, recorded in the Worcester Registry of Deeds, Book 50, page 16, to Loriee Suite and Robert Suite, individually and as trustees of the Suite Living Trust, consistent with the authority granted by the select board in Article 33 of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Were you gonna crack that, Bob?
I just want it to be, uh, it, it may only be .25 acres, not 25.
Isn't that what we said? We said .25.
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry about that.
We're two points, or...
Yeah, it is, it is just a quarter of an acre. Nice try. So motion been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
So, what do we do from here? Is my, my tax bill remains as it always is, right, the way it's been being billed?
Yeah, what, what, I, I would talk to the, uh, start off with the, uh, Finance Director, with Jody Curzy.
Okay, tax collector.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Finance Director in the department, between them and the assessors, but what will happen is the transfer of this piece of land, um, it potentially could be a separate tax bill, but, uh, my understanding is what they'll do is they'll combine it.
Just combine it like it has been, like they thought it was.
Right, exactly, because, because what was happening is they were being charged for it already, um, they didn't realize that this quarter in the middle didn't belong to them, it had been taken, like it says, 1927, um, so.
One, one quick question, um, what about a deed? Because I'm assuming it has a deed, so that deed needs to be transferred.
Yeah, what's, what's, what's gonna happen is just, just as it says right here with the motion that we made, that's what, that's will allow us to generate a deed.
And then we have to go get it registered.
Yeah, well, um, you know, if, if you actually, um, send an email to the, to Katie Toomey, she is the, she is the registrar of deeds in Worcester, just go on the website, and she'll walk you right through it.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you all.
Have a great night. Thanks for sticking around for the presentation.
Actually, that was a pretty good presentation, I liked listening to it.
That was a great one, right?
He made a lot of good points, um, lots to think about. We'll see where it goes.
Number seven is, um, basically revisited from, from our last meeting two weeks ago. Uh, we had done a, 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 several, um, one-year and three-year reappointments that were due, um, and there were actually four folks that had, um, had not completed their required ethics training. Um, so what's happened is, uh, three of the four, um, which was a, a finance committee member, Mike Craig, and, um, Mort Schmidt, Town Forest Committee, um, both were, were, um, I believe those are three-year terms, and Charis North, our town council, not all of the law firm, but specifically town council, needs to complete the ethics training, and I believe hers was done, she just didn't have it over, but, but, um, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Craig have completed them and verified it with the town clerk. Um, there is one more outstanding, um, who was to be reappointed for the ZBA, um, and I had, he had said he had trouble, but he would take care of it. Um, I haven't heard from him since, I sent him another email today, still haven't heard from him. So at this point, I'm looking for a, um, a motion to appoint, uh, Mike Craig to a three-year term of the, uh, of the Finance Committee, uh, Mort Schmidt a three-year term to the Town Forest Committee, uh, Charis North is a one-year term as town council.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And, um, as far as the, uh, what essentially now would be an open ZBA position, um, we're gonna advertise for that one, and certainly the same gentleman who was an alternate before could reapply again if he wishes. Uh, but I, I, what I, what we did last year is we had a lot of them that strangled well into the fall, and now that's not the case. Everybody is, who needed to get done is done except one, and, uh, we'll just move forward and deal with it from there. Okay? So just so I'm clear, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Um, motion in second. And now, uh, number nine, endorsement of Mass Historical Grant, if you want to talk to us about that.
When the, when the application was submitted, it came back with a cover letter basically saying that the town had gotten a grant for the preservation of Hastings, uh...
Records room.
Records room, and, uh, several of the papers have disconnected, so these are endorsements that are gonna need, be needed in order to, uh, sort of like tie up all the, the legal part of us getting the grant. Uh, the first one is a project authorization and support, and it identifies five different tasks and that was signed individuals to it, Mike is one of them, in terms of, uh, can you read that, I'm sorry, um, contracts, he signs the contracts, I'm basically doing all the other work in terms of overseeing the report on procurement, annunciation, disbursement of funds for the project, uh, prepared progress and completed reports, and arrange for grant funding, all of it, including the sign, they're real big on the sign for some reason, I don't know why that is, but, so that's one of the conditions in it, that the second item is a certificate of authorization for the Mass Historical Grant contract, it's basically saying that the board agrees with the terms of the contract, we haven't gotten the contract yet, by, by the way, but it requires us basically to certify that we are gonna accept the conditions. All of the statements on this, it's a standard form contract, no matter what project it is, it's a one-pager, so, uh, you know, that shouldn't be a big deal, then you're certifying that you did that. Finally, you have a certificate of authorization for the preservation restriction, every historical project has a list of things that they require as part of the grant agreement, and once again, there's a disclosure here that needs an endorsement by, uh, in, in both of these, the last two cases, it says clerk of the, of the, the select board, when I went onto the website, there wasn't a clerk, there was a chair vice chair, so I, I basically put all of them in your name, so, uh, I would just, uh, make a motion, not make, I'm not gonna make a motion.
No, but what I'm gonna do is ask, I was gonna look for a motion, uh, to, to endorse the Mass Historical Grant certifications for the Hastings Law Office, Men and Post Office.
And why don't we have it, uh, referencing Attachment A, and, and those documents will be included in the Act, so there will be no misunderstanding with those documents actually.
Which is this Attachment A, which starts with Section Two, Project Authorization and Support. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So that allows us to accept the grant and, and move forward.
Open spaces.
And actually, it's a $64,000 grant, that's, that's the amount, right?
Is there anything we have to sign tonight, or is that a little...
Um, I think, it looks, looks like, looks like I have to sign them all, but, um, there is one thing I, I wanted to, we, we talk about, obviously, we're gonna have our next, the, the first Wednesday in August, but what I, I'd like to do is talk about actually having a meeting to talk about, um, you know, goal-setting and a bunch of the plans, I mean, we just had this presentation here, we have the DLS study, we have the, um, uh, master plan, right? I think there's a lot of things, and I, I know what I'd like to do is, is kind of sketch out a, a, a plan of how we want... out a, a, a plan of how we want to move forward, you know, which one of us is gonna take control or, or responsibility for which part of it, because I think we're at a point where we're ready to do that now. We have the day-to-day taken care of, and we're looking for a permanent replacement, so I think we should set out a guide for that. So I, I don't know if, if you want to look at calendars now, or do you want to kind of, you know, pick a date?
Sorry, I'm hoping it's not in August, because I'm going to be traveling between our two scheduled dates, so.
Okay. So do you want to pick the begin, you think, pick, pick the beginning of September, right after Labor Day?
That would work for me.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we, we are meeting on the sixth, right after Labor Day, just to?
Yeah.
Can we just wait that long? Or, I mean, it can wait that long, I guess, if, if folks are kind of, I sent something around, just sort of how I kind of started to think about things.
Yeah.
Do we all do that, then bring it back? No deliberation, but just sort of being prepared, because if it's September?
Well, that, that's what I think, is, is, is everybody, you know, we start with a framework of what you sent, and then we just got this PowerPoint, and everybody should have the DLS study.
This, this one's more complicated in some ways, but it also aligns to a lot of things. We got all of our CBA coming up in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
So that actually aligns nicely with some of the things that we're gonna talk about through this process. But then like financial analysis, Mike, that might be something we could ask Jody and Team to get going on sooner. So September, we actually start to get some homework done.
Well, actually, now I'm looking at the calendar, there are a couple of weeks after, so August has five Wednesdays.
I prefer not to do it on off Wednesday, but.
What's that?
I would prefer not to meet on an off Wednesday, just to have good standing.
Yeah, I'm thinking. I was, I was actually kind of thinking we could pick, pick like a Saturday morning, maybe? If that would, if that's possible? I know we're gonna give up a weekend, but could you do it in August at all?
Oh, I can, I, yeah, so I'm going to Prague, I'm moving back.
Yeah, it's work.
At this point, the seventeenth, I'm probably moving it back earlier, so probably then I, the nineteenth, but I'll be jet-lagged, but that's for the twenty-sixth. Actually, yeah, well, so I, I would, if we're gonna do it on a Saturday, I would kind of rather wait until September, but that's just because my kids are home for the summer, I only have like two weeks left with that.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, if we're gonna, there's a lot to go through.
Right.
I, I think, starting in that conference room downstairs, you know, at nine in the morning, and just.
Right, and this would need to be an open meeting, I'm assuming, so.
Yeah. So are we looking at, I'm assuming Labor Day is, Labor Day is the fourth, yeah? So we could either, do you want to try for the, you said you wouldn't be around on the twenty-sixth?
I have gone the twenty-sixth, September twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, September second is Labor Day weekend, I don't know if people might be traveling.
Yeah, so the, what you're, what you're really saying is the ninth, unless you want to do it sooner, like the beginning of August, before you go away. When are you going away?
Uh, this, August third.
Oh, wow.
I've, I've got a conference, so, so.
I get it.
Yeah. So I have, I'm, I'm leaving, you know, I scheduled it after my trip, after our meeting.
Yeah.
It's not anticipating for a meeting.
And you'd be back, right, well?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I was saying, I will either do the, the meeting on the sixteenth remotely, or I'll be there. I mean, I could do the nineteenth.
So what about the nineteenth of August?
I can do the nineteenth of August.
Can you? Brendan?
Today I leave on vacation.
You leave on vacation on the nineteenth?
Sorry.
What about the eighteenth of August?
The Friday?
I'm leaving.
Just the one.
No, I'm just, I'm not gonna mess with his life, by the way.
Yeah.
So, Wednesdays are generally bad for you, other than these meetings, like even when there's five Wednesdays in a month? Okay. All right, just confirm.
How about Tuesdays?
I could do Tuesdays.
Well, Wednesday's the only day I, I can do any other day.
Or like Tuesday the fifteenth?
Well.
But you're gonna be gone.
I might not be back yet.
Yeah, you're gone.
Okay, Tuesday the twenty-second, Tuesday the twenty-ninth.
Next week?
Honestly.
Oh, to like start?
Yeah, no, I just.
The boat race is next Tuesday, and.
We're participating.
No, the next Thursday, Friday. My, my point is this, the first time we sit down, I would not expect to be able to spend eight hours doing it. I think it's gonna be about grinding ourselves, and what is all we have to think about? Take that away, and then maybe September or late August, we come back with more of an idea of what it all means, and possibly, next week, we could come out and get some light groundwork that needs to be done, so we can make decisions.
I won't be available next week, sorry.
Well, what about, and you said you're leaving when? You're leaving August third.
I could do the thirtieth, like a Sunday.
Hmm?
Of July. I, I'm just, that's the next day I'm available.
Well, why don't we, we talked about, we were talking about the nineteenth, you're going away, Brendan, right?
Yes.
What about Tuesday the first?
Tuesday the first, I'm available.
Oh, Tuesday the first of August.
And then, and then you want, and then you're gonna meet, we're gonna meet again the next day on Wednesday the second?
So, yeah, this, this.
So two nights in a row?
Senior Center Expansion Committee is meeting August first, but.
What time?
Six-thirty.
Actually, I've got, second, too. Yeah, it wasn't formally.
Yeah, we haven't really, I mean, they can, you can meet informally and discuss it, we just haven't. And what about, what do we, what about Saturday the twenty-ninth? July twenty-ninth?
I'll be coming back from vacation, so I could do it at night.
What?
Saturday.
Well, what about, what about Monday night, the July thirty-first, then?
I could do that.
What about August third?
She's leaving that day.
Yeah, I'll be on a plane, so.
So what about, what about Monday night, July thirty-first?
I could do that.
That works for me.
No?
Probably not, but I can check.
All right, well, let's, let's pick July thirty-first, tentatively.
I'll say no, now, just, and I'll let you know if that can change.
I, we, we really need to pick a time when all five of us can be here and talk about this, we gotta do that. No, well, we're not gonna.
Only there were an application.
And, and the, who can on the twenty-ninth? Oh, you're getting back on the twenty-ninth. With the, with the, so what'll be, do we say Tuesday, August first? We already said, well, that won't work, or that would work?
That works for me.
I mean, it's, there's the Senior Center meeting, but like we, I mean, I don't have to be there, you don't, I mean.
Right.
I think this, this is more key, like I think the Senior Center will be potentially affected by these plans, so.
What time do you want to meet? We'll meet downstairs, so we're not interfering with whoever might be meeting here on Monday night. What time do you want to, you want to do six-thirty again, or you want to do it seven? You want to do it at six?
Anytime after three works for me that day.
I'd rather start earlier than later, and see how, in case it runs, you know?
I'm flexible.
Five o'clock?
I can do five o'clock. Is that too soon for you? You want to do five-thirty?
Five-thirties?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, how about five-thirty, then, on?
That doesn't work there, but I don't mind.
Five-thirty on Tuesday, August first. And then six-thirty the next night, for a regular meeting. And then putting this boat together, I want it to really.
Yeah, we have to talk about that.
Put it together tomorrow, but.
So we wanna, we wanna think about all this stuff before we meet? That works the whole.
Yeah, right, that's right.
Yeah, so. If you have an idea, well, what was I saying? If you have an idea, you can send it to me, and then I can have a package ready for the board.
Using the format that Mike sent out, or?
I'll send it to you, that's what I mentioned to you in the day. Okay. I just moved that.
As, and actually, before I forget, we have, we have John Dovey's side letter, everybody signed it?
Yes.
I probably have not, because I wasn't here.
Okay, I, okay, I'll find it, it's, do you have it there? I might have it in this pile here someplace.
I don't know, I actually, I'm not sure, it, I don't remember, I wasn't here last week.
Yeah, but no, I just, I just signed, yeah, this, this one. The other one, there is, there is something still in the, in the town clerk's office. You gotta go down to see her, although she won't be there now, because it's closed until. All right, well, I'm gonna, see, I'm, I'm gonna put this, put it together in my, or at least start putting it together in my son's garage at thirty-three, Beet Street, right next to me.
Okay.
And you have some pieces for reinforcement, you said.
I do, yeah, they're in my garage, and I have some down there, I've got some, like, really thick cardboard, like structural cardboard.
Okay, I was gonna, what I was thinking about doing is putting, doing like a, like a six-foot John boat, square in the back, and it kind of, you know, it's pretty straightforward, and get, get it sealed up and duct taped, and then you could maybe put some reinforcement after, and I'm gonna paint it with.
What are you gonna name it?
What's that?
What's, what's it gonna be named?
We, let's think about that. We don't want to give away everything on the camera, but, so, at this point, we've got the dates.
Yeah, so when were you planning, so, because I wasn't here, so when, when were you going to work on building it?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
And I may, depending on what gets done, I may move it.
I don't think I'm available tomorrow.
All right, what I may do is, do, put together what I can put together, and I may actually transport it to Brendan, to your house.
Okay.
And then you can finish putting your pieces on it, and then we'll.
Are you gonna paint it on Friday, is that right?
I probably not paint it Friday. I think, well, yeah, actually, probably if you finish on Friday, you know, then we'll paint it over the weekend, so it'll dry.
Yeah, we need plenty of time for it to dry.
A dry. So, let's start, the plan is, I'm gonna start putting it together tomorrow, and I'm gonna get it to you.
Okay, that works.
It's gonna be hot and sunny all night, so.
I'm running Friday, if you're doing something.
All right, good, good.
Just tell me where I need to be.
Yeah, we'll figure, we'll figure it out.
And I'm available Saturday and Sunday.
See a Tesla pulling a cardboard boat behind it down the street.
Right. All right, any motion to adjourn? Absolutely.
Every other board I've worked for, generally given the Town Administration's report, it's basically like a two-minute overview of the things I've been working on, some of which involve the board. The first is there, I've been in touch with Jenna Masood from Congressman Ossoff's office. We spoke briefly at Southwood Mikehead regarding the water sewer. She said that they've been willing to meet, this is probably a Teams meeting, either on Monday, the thirty-first, Wednesday, the second, or Thursday, the third, really complicated things here, so we're backing everything up. I'm sure I could get that pushed out of.
Well, we could meet, does she want to talk during, during the meeting, August second?
I could add her in.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that. She can do it remotely, so that's.
I did, I did speak with, not Masood's boss, I think, I spoke with her a few weeks ago.
She had said, uh, she had looped in another person, Dana Hanson.
Yeah, Dana, yeah.
So, you know, it'll be an opportunity to at least get the Congress in the air through his legislative staff, and get people thinking about potential ways to get some money for water, Dan Wolf's sewer.
Just water and sewer, did anything about housing?
We can, we can do, they just want to hear our concerns, and we can, actually, not a bad idea is having both a senator and congressman, state rep come in and tell us what's available, because every year, the, the state does these bond bills, and they'll call you, like, and give you forty-eight hour notices, something, you want to give the town seventy-five thousand dollars, what do you need?
Yeah, we've, we've done it, that, that's this second phase of this water study.
All right.
That's where that came from.
Yeah, I did it, I just did a ban stand, and at the end, my tenure in Dunstville gets seventy-five thousand dollars to reimburse the instant. The paddock property is gonna be in the next meeting, Senior Expansion question is gonna be on the next meeting, working on closing out the Green Community, had some discussions with the chief of some of the things that need to be done, I've worked with a woman who is in charge of that, so that shouldn't be too bad. Working to arrange a site visit for the Hastings Law Office, it's one of the requirements we have to do in June, July, so I'm working to get that taken care of between myself, the architect, and the representative of Mass, I, from Mass Historical, and that, that's about it. I also signed an authorization for additional services for seventy-three and seventy-five Providence Street, Ian Nazar had said that they want to do some water testing there, and it's in the amount of, looks like, I just had cataracts or a green, my, my right eye, I can't see anything out of, my left eye, I can see perfect, the two of them can't see together.
Yeah.
It looks like nineteen.
In nineteen fifty, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Had like three weeks ago, it's on the scrubber. That's about it, and like I said, I'd like to add that to the agenda every week.
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, if you have any questions, you can say, you know, what are you, what are you working on, I can let you know what I'm doing, and we all keep some eyes in communication.
Yeah.
And something else that will be on there is, you know, we've got the, the vendor that is working on the plans for Route sixteen.
Okay.
And they say they would come in at that meeting as well.
I think I already got that.
Yeah.
Do, do we need to chase down the architect for the next phase of Town Hall, or have we heard anything from that person?
It's gonna be something, maybe a future topic, just, we need to, probably.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it, we'll put her on here for, as a follow-up, right, right.
It's sort of getting into an era now, where you can't just.
Right, right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Aye. Aye, aye.
So about the cardboard boat.